Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. The meeting will be starting shortly. While we wait, let's learn more about Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels available on Comcast channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on channel 13 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter bi-weekly report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
No. April 6th? No, not April 6th. Well, lucky 13th. April 13th, 2023. And I begin with introductions. I'm Langdon Plummer, Chair of the Board, and to my left is...
Want me to go?
Yes.
You forgot my name, didn't you?
No.
Aaron Brown, my chair.
It's my new assistant.
Gwen English.
Nancy Belanger, Select Board Representative.
And Pete Clark.
Pete Cameron Clark.
And Jen Martel.
Thank you, everybody. We're going to start off with minutes this evening. And the first set we have is the 26th of January. That's where I got the 26th from. So the floor is open to discuss these and take action on them.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
On page 2 of 5, line 81. The pack that we had before had "as goals and land use decisions" was highlighted. I listened to that section. So page 81 should read "background information that's needed before we get there." So I'm recommending we take out "such as goals and land use decisions" and see tape page 49, minutes.
Okay. So put a period after information or such? Let's see, with some background? No. Nope.
Nancy, what are we taking out?
I'm having a hard time hearing with the blow behind me. So...
How should we...
It's okay. I can... So 81, line 81 on page 2 of 5.
Yes.
Should read "background information that's needed before we get there," period, "and remove 'such as goals and land use decisions,' period. See tape 49 minutes," period, should be removed.
Well, that should be...
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else, Nancy?
Is that it for... Do you have more?
Go ahead.
Um, I think line 76. Mr. Sharples noted, I think the word "I" near the end of this, just the "I will bring it to the table, to the meeting," should be "he" because that's how the sentence is structured at the beginning, so that's just a minor. So change "I" to "he."
To which? Thee?
He.
Oh, okay.
So it would read, but it still needs work, so "he will bring it to the meeting for discussion."
Oh, okay.
Um...
Yep.
Line 85 at the end of the sentence, just change "less" to "fewer." That's all I had.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Pete?
I didn't have any because I was not that moved.
Okay. Well, what do you know about that? Jen?
I'm good.
Okay. Looking for motion?
I move to approve the draft meeting minutes for January 26, 2023 as amended.
Second, please.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Gwen, out of favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention, and one abstention. Thank you. Passed or adopted. Now, let's see.
Oh.
Oh, there's the other side. To February 9th, 2023, please. Are on the table for discussion?
Please.
Mm-hmm.
Line 34 and 35 and 36. This is more a question, a question. David noted the potential launch date is the second week of March. Would that actually occur? Not that we can put it in the minutes. But did that launch dating?
Yeah.
Yes, I thought it had, but I wasn't sure. It's not anything to be added to the minutes. This was just a firefly.
Yeah. We did.
And then I did have...
You were there, Pete.
What?
You were there.
I was?
Yeah.
Yes, I was.
At the launch.
I can't abstain anymore.
We just got the minutes on.
And then I did mention...
Quite a memorable evening, apparently.
Then on line 79, page 3 or 4.
Yes.
We did discuss informally earlier that we do not have a new member of the board by Mrs. Murphy. I think we need to identify who Mrs. Murphy is, and that would be merely Kristen Murphy, and I forget exactly what her title is. If that is...
Human resource.
That's what you, Jen, you didn't record.
Kristen's our natural resource. I'm not a...
No, it was natural resource planner. Now she's the conservation and sustainability planner.
We could just identify her as such.
Maybe we can add the title.
Conservation and Sustainability Planner.
Yeah. That would be my only thought there.
What is it, Dave?
Conservation and Sustainability Planner.
Yeah, that's right. She picked up sustainability, didn't she?
Because she added responsibilities.
Spark came along.
Full-time.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I have one on...
Yes, go ahead, please.
Forty-five.
Thirty-five, okay.
Forty-five.
Forty-five, thank you.
T-I-F, not T-I-F-F, right? Is that right?
Diff road.
TIF, the TIF is just one...
T-I-F.
Just one F.
Tax Incremental Financing.
Yeah, that's what I thought. And that was all I had.
Okay. Anyone else? Well, I'm looking for motion.
I'll move.
Okay. Acceptance of the minutes as modified.
February 9, 2023.
Okay, is this...
You get adopted as modified.
Yep.
Second?
Second, and thank you. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Carries?
I voted because I did watch the meeting.
Okay. That's good. Good use of your time, anyway.
It was.
All right. March 23rd, 2023. This is a work session.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
No one else is going. On line 33, and Dave, you can help with this because it was something that you quoted, but the last sentence, the end of that sentence on line 33 doesn't really make sense, and I just wondered if the emotions in the social-emotional aspect...
I definitely wouldn't have said that. So I would just put a period at the "after emotions."
Okay. I was going to say, or emotional and social well-being or something to that.
I don't remember exactly what I said, but I don't think I would say "social-emotional."
Yeah. It doesn't sound like something...
Unless I...
Never know with the new vocabulary.
In the social aspect, it could have been like "social aspect" or something like that.
Anything else?
Um, yeah.
Yes, okay, Gwen.
Again, I'm starting to change sentences that... On line 35 and 36, the last sentence, "There are little or no impervious surfaces other than some bedrock." It doesn't really indicate where you're talking about, and I wonder if it could be, if we could have it read "there are little or no impervious surfaces in or on undeveloped land," because that's, isn't that what we're talking about?
That's what I was talking about, yes.
It follows too from the sentence.
I thought you were going to say "under the river."
From line 30, it talks about, you noted the first part would be the benefits of undeveloped land.
Right.
The next six sentences are just continuing that thought.
Okay. Well, that's up to you. I just wondered if it was, maybe make it more clear, but I don't care.
Yeah, you can be, yeah, you can.
Yeah, that's good.
It doesn't.
I think it's okay.
But he probably didn't say it.
Maybe not.
You know what I'm saying?
Yep, I do. Um, and then I'm...
We can try to help Dave with his English, but it is your last name.
I may be not the one to do that, but... Line 37, one sentence, he noted pollutants are absorbed and nitrogen and phosphorus.
I read that, I didn't know what that...
You didn't know what that, I don't, I...
I mean, I could have said, you know, pollutants are absorbed, such as nitrogen and phosphorus.
Okay.
I mean, that's something I would say.
Why don't we put that in?
Yeah, "such as."
Okay.
Put "such as," okay.
And then, I think 40, I think swatch should be swath, S-W-A-T-H-E.
Swath, yeah.
And then Mr. Long-eared Bat, how there is no logging. Oh, and the bat sentence on 41.
An example instead of "on" example?
Yeah. Yeah.
For example?
And I'm wondering if it, the northern long-eared bat and how, maybe, how there is no logging between, it doesn't really, it doesn't...
How about "and that"?
There would be no longer a log.
And in our attempt to protect them, there is no logging permitted between. So put permitted in between logging and between and after how, put in our attempt to protect them. I mean, it's nice to have that in there. I think, I don't want to eliminate the sentence, but it kind of doesn't make sense the way it's written now.
Did you say that?
He didn't say that? I don't know.
I don't know.
I know, I can't, I can't, but either tick it out or it just doesn't, it sort of doesn't make sense.
How about "and why there is no logging"? Would that make it better?
Um...
Instead of "how, why"?
Mr. Said, the northern... Oh. I don't know.
Or does not allow logging.
Yeah, either, whatever. Sorry. I don't know. What do you think, Dave?
On what? Which one?
Line 41.
Oh, I thought you just said permit. I mean, I probably didn't say that. I probably just said what it is because it was, it was going on depending, it was coming depending upon large, you know, swaths of unfragmented land.
Yeah.
And logging will, you know...
But you're talking about the long-eared bat.
Protect, because we're trying to protect the long-eared bat.
I can't harvest my trees between May and August. That's not right. In some parts.
Yeah, you could, I mean, I could have said permitted, no logging permitted between May 15th and August 15th.
Okay, let's do that.
I'm not sure what the difference is there between no logging and saying there's no logging permitted, but I think the thing is just making sure preservation is the more important to me.
Right, right.
But he probably, knowing Dave, he probably didn't necessarily say it, but Daniel also surmises these a little bit, you know what I mean? Like he condenses it, yeah.
He does.
Yeah.
Yeah. The last one I have again, this is one of your sentences, Dave, on line 60. How many acres would be afforded to produce what each of us need? I don't know.
Yeah, I wouldn't have said it that way, but...
Number of square miles on the earth surface.
So it's just the "afforded" that I'm not sure, I don't know.
Would be needed?
That whole sentence doesn't make a heck of a lot of sense. You'd have to watch the video.
Necessary or required.
Because it talks about, indicated the number of square miles on the earth surface and how many were water compared to the number of people on earth. That's not what I said. I took out the water, I took out the land, and then they provided an example in a mathematical equation of how many people and how many acres per land each, each person.
Ah.
You know, acre of land per person in the world right now is like 40, you know, and then I compared it to a subdivision. It's like 40 acres, you know, everything everyone uses has to come from that.
Right, okay.
So that's kind of what I was saying. This doesn't say that.
It doesn't, it doesn't.
I don't know, I don't know. I don't know what to do about it.
Neither.
Yeah. Instead of afforded, would be needed.
Right.
Thank you.
We could change afforded to needed.
Okay.
And then above that, if we, if I can just, I was waiting for you to go to 55. The last, the, after the comma, accepting, I think it's accept, current use, and I wouldn't have said "which is somewhat less" because current use is not somewhat less. It's, can be very significant, actually. So I think what I said, if I remember correctly, except current use, which is a whole other story. I think I actually said that to like, okay, I'm not going to, you know, we could, we could spend a whole, you know, whole session talking about current use.
Yeah.
But I didn't say "is somewhat less." Except, so I would put "except current use," period.
What line was that now?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five.
Okay.
Strike "which is somewhat less" because I know I wouldn't have said that.
Except current use, yes. Which is always under the microscope.
If I did, I don't know.
Is there anything else?
It's not what I meant.
Anything else, Gwen?
No.
Anybody else? I'm looking for a motion then, please.
I move to accept the draft meeting minutes as amended from March 23rd, 2023.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Sure.
Thank you. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, motion carries? Okay. New business. The application of Richard and Debbie Schaefer for a minor subdivision of the existing 21-plus-minus acre parcel located at 24 Powder Mill Road. The applicant is proposing to subdivide off a 5.01-plus-minus acre parcel with frontage on Powder Mill Road for new residents. Subject property is located in the R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District, is tax map parcel number 102-4, and is planning board case number 23-3. And Dave, would you like to begin?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, is it ready to be heard?
Ah, yes.
Okay.
My opinion, it is complete for review purposes.
Okay. Like a motion to accept this case then?
Somewhat.
Second?
Second.
Second. Those in favor, please sit by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, they have it? Okay, Dave.
So as you stated, the applicant submitted a minor subdivision plan supporting documents that were in your packet. They submitted an application, some zoning board of adjustment minutes, and a letter, and the plan. The applicant appeared before the zoning board of adjustment at their November 15th, 2022 meeting, and was granted a variance for relief from the requirements to provide the 24 inches to the seasonal high water table for test pits for an individual sewer's disposal system that is required in our zoning ordinance. A copy of the ZBA decision letter and the minutes from that meeting were enclosed, and they were granted the relief. There was no technical review committee. However, the plans were reviewed by staff for compliance with zoning and subdivision regulations as standard. Code enforcement officer Doug Eastman determined that the proposal, while the proposal meets the minimum dimensional requirements, the subject property is located within the special floodhead, flood hazard area, or the AE flood zone, and is subject to the recently adopted amendment to Article 9.4 Flood Plane Development Ordinance, which prohibits new or expansion of existing septic systems except to correct malfunctions of the septic system, of existing septic systems. The applicant's subdivision application was received in our office on February 23rd, 2023. This was after the posting of the proposed amendment on December 28th, 2022, but before the town meeting vote on March 14th, 2023. However, it has the effect of law when it gets posted to when action is taken, and then if it gets adopted like it is, it continues. But, you know, if it, if it didn't get voted in by the voters, then it would be a moot point and would revert back to our prior regulations. The applicant has been advised that relief from the zoning board of adjustment will be necessary for the proposed construction of a new individual sewer's disposal system on the property. The applicant has requested to move forward with the public hearing on the application and discuss any further comments and/or concerns the board may have. I did speak with Representative Henry Boyd, who's here tonight, and he asked if the planning board could approve the subdivision with the condition that the applicant secures a variance from the flood plane ordinance. The planning board, at least during my time here, has not approved any plan subject to subsequent relief from the ZBA. I don't believe it's good practice as it brings the planning board into the variance discussion by deciding on an application prior to a ZBA hearing. I have consulted with legal counsel. I could provide that board with their opinion, either at the public meeting or under the exception in NHRS A91A3 Roman numeral 2L, but I, obviously, I would always suggest the latter, so if you do want to hear what the attorney had to share with me, I'd be happy to do that in a non-public session. That said, I do believe the planning board can start the process. I do believe it's complete for review purposes, hold the public hearing, relay any initial concerns or comments the board may have, and then table the application to a later date, which will allow the applicant to file an application for the next ZBA meeting and reappear before the board in the event they are successful in securing relief. Because there are no waivers requested in conjunction with this application, but for the variance, it would be a very simple, straightforward, minor subdivision that creates a conforming lot, a lot that conforms to our zoning ordinance. So I have no issue with the, with the plans outside of Doug Eastman, you know, has determined that a variance is required.
So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that would go into a private, non-public session under NHRS A91-A:3 Roman numeral 2, as outlined in Town Planner Dave Sharples' memo.
Little L.
Little L.
With the L.
And I'll second, please?
Okay, second.
Do we have a vote?
Yeah, we need a vote. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Do we need to do it individually for a non-public?
To go to a non-public session, yeah?
Yeah, I think we have to do it individually, don't we? Or does it not matter?
Okay, you can do that.
Roll call.
Do it individually.
Let's do it.
Okay, yes.
Roll call.
Roll call.
That's why I couldn't come up with, thank you. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
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 You're unanimous? We are going to, we need to leave the room. We're going to run downstairs.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Chair? Yes? No one else is going? On line 33, and Dave, you can help with this because it was something that you quoted, but the last sentence, the end of that sentence on line 33 doesn't really make sense, and I just wondered if the emotions in the social-emotional aspect...
I definitely wouldn't have said that. So I would just put a period at the "after emotions."
Okay. I was going to say, or emotional and social well-being or something to that. But you didn't say that.
I don't remember exactly what I said, but I don't think I would say "social-emotional."
Yeah. It doesn't sound like something...
Unless I...
Never know with the new vocabulary.
In the social aspect, it could have been like "social aspect" or something like that.
Anything else?
Um, yeah.
Yes, okay, Gwen.
Again, I'm starting to change sentences that... On line 35 and 36, the last sentence, "There are little or no impervious surfaces other than some bedrock." It doesn't really indicate where you're talking about, and I wonder if it could be, if we could have it read "there are little or no impervious surfaces in or on undeveloped land," because that's, isn't that what we're talking about?
That's what I was talking about, yes.
It follows too from the sentence.
I thought you were going to say "under the river."
From line 30, it talks about, you noted the first part would be the benefits of undeveloped land.
Right.
The next six sentences are just continuing that thought.
Okay. Well, that's up to you. I just wondered if it was, maybe make it more clear, but I don't care.
Yeah, you can be, yeah, you can.
Yeah, that's good.
It doesn't.
I think it's okay.
But he probably didn't say it.
Maybe not.
You know what I'm saying?
Yep, I do. Um, and then I'm...
We can try to help Dave with his English, but it is your last name.
I may be not the one to do that, but... Line 37, one sentence, he noted pollutants are absorbed and nitrogen and phosphorus.
I read that, I didn't know what that...
You didn't know what that, I don't, I...
I mean, I could have said, you know, pollutants are absorbed, such as nitrogen and phosphorus.
Okay.
I mean, that's something I would say.
Why don't we put that in?
Yeah, "such as."
Okay.
Put "such as," okay.
And then, I think 40, I think swatch should be swath, S-W-A-T-H-E.
Swath, yeah.
And then Mr. Long-eared Bat, how there is no logging. Oh, and the bat sentence on 41.
An example instead of "on" example?
Yeah. Yeah.
For example?
And I'm wondering if it, the northern long-eared bat and how, maybe, how there is no logging between, it doesn't really, it doesn't...
How about "and that"?
There would be no longer a log.
And in our attempt to protect them, there is no logging permitted between. So put permitted in between logging and between and after how, put in our attempt to protect them. I mean, it's nice to have that in there. I think, I don't want to eliminate the sentence, but it kind of doesn't make sense the way it's written now.
Did you say that?
He didn't say that? I don't know.
I don't know.
I know, I can't, I can't, but it, either tick it out or it just doesn't, it sort of doesn't make sense.
Permit. How about "and why there is no logging"? Would that make it better?
Um...
Instead of "how, why"?
Mr. Said, the northern... Oh. I don't know.
Or does not allow logging.
Yeah, either, whatever. Sorry. I don't know. What do you think, Dave?
On what? Which one?
Line 41.
Oh, I thought you just said permit. I mean, I probably didn't say that. I probably just said what it is because it was, it was going on depending, it was coming depending upon large, you know, swaths of unfragmented land.
Yeah.
And logging will, you know...
But you're talking about the long-eared bat.
We don't permit logging. Because we're trying to protect the long-eared bat.
I can't harvest my trees between May and August. That's not right. In some parts.
Yeah, you could, I mean, I could have said permitted, no logging permitted between May 15th and August 15th.
Okay, let's do that.
I'm not sure what the difference is there between no logging and saying there's no logging permitted, but I think the thing is just making sure...
Well, it's no logging.
Preservation is the more important to me.
Right, right.
But he probably, knowing Dave, he probably didn't necessarily say it, but Daniel also surmises these a little bit, you know what I mean? Like he condenses it, yeah.
He does, yeah.
Yeah. The last one I have again, this is one of your sentences, Dave, on line 60. How many acres would be afforded to produce what each of us need? I don't know.
Yeah, I wouldn't have said it that way, but...
The number of square miles on the earth surface.
So it's just the "afforded" that I'm not sure, I don't know.
Would be needed?
That whole sentence doesn't make a heck of a lot of sense.
It would be necessary.
You'd have to watch the video.
Necessary or required.
Because it talks about, indicated the number of square miles on the earth surface and how many were water compared to the number of people on earth. That's not what I said. I took out the water, I took out the land, and then they provided an example in a mathematical equation of how many people and how many acres per land each, each person.
Ah.
You know, acre of land per person in the world right now is like 40, you know, and then I compared it to a subdivision. It's like 40 acres, you know, everything everyone uses has to come from that.
Right, okay.
So that's kind of what I was saying. This doesn't say that.
It doesn't, it doesn't.
I don't know, I don't know. I don't know what to do about it.
Me either.
Yeah. Instead of afforded, would be needed.
Right.
Thank you.
We could change afforded to needed.
Okay.
And then above that, if we, if I can just, I was waiting for you to go to 55. The last set, the, after the comma, accepting, I think it's accept, current use, and I wouldn't have said "which is somewhat less" because current use is not somewhat less. It's, can be very significant, actually.
So it'd be...
So I think what I said, if I remember correctly, except current use, which is a whole other story. I think I actually said that to like, okay, I'm not going to, you know, we could, we could spend a whole, you know, whole session talking about current use.
Yeah.
But I didn't say "is somewhat less." Except, so I would put "except current use," period.
What line was that now?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five.
Okay.
Strike "which is somewhat less" because I know I wouldn't have said that.
Except current use, yes. Which is always under the microscope.
If I did, I don't know.
Is there anything else?
It's not what I meant.
Anything else, Gwen?
No.
Anybody else? I'm looking for a motion then, please.
I move to accept the draft meeting minutes as amended from March 23rd, 2023.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Sure.
Thank you. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the habit? Okay, Dave?
So as you stated, the applicant submitted a minor subdivision plan supporting documents that were in your packet. They submitted an application, some zoning board of adjustment minutes, and a letter, and the plan. The applicant appeared before the zoning board of adjustment at their November 15th, 2022 meeting, and was granted a variance for relief from the requirements to provide the 24 inches to the seasonal high water table for test pits for an individual sewer's disposal system that is required in our zoning ordinance. A copy of the ZBA decision letter and the minutes from that meeting were enclosed, and they were granted the relief. There was no technical review committee. However, the plans were reviewed by staff for compliance with zoning and subdivision regulations as standard. Code enforcement officer Doug Eastman determined that the proposal, while the proposal meets the minimum dimensional requirements, the subject property is located within the special floodhead, flood hazard area, or the AE flood zone, and is subject to the recently adopted amendment to Article 9.4 Flood Plane Development Ordinance, which prohibits new or expansion of existing septic systems except to correct malfunctions of the septic system, of existing septic systems. The applicant's subdivision application was received in our office on February 23rd, 2023. This was after the posting of the proposed amendment on December 28th, 2022, but before the town meeting vote on March 14th, 2023. However, it has the effect of law when it gets posted to when action is taken, and then if it gets adopted like it is, it continues. But, you know, if it, if it didn't get voted in by the voters, then it would be a moot point and would revert back to our prior regulations. The applicant has been advised that relief from the zoning board of adjustment will be necessary for the proposed construction of a new individual sewer's disposal system on the property. The applicant has requested to move forward with the public hearing on the application and discuss any further comments and/or concerns the board may have. I did speak with Representative Henry Boyd, who's here tonight, and he asked if the planning board could approve the subdivision with the condition that the applicant secures a variance from the flood plane ordinance. The planning board, at least during my time here, has not approved any plan subject to subsequent relief from the ZBA. I don't believe it's good practice as it brings the planning board into the variance discussion by deciding on an application prior to a ZBA hearing. I have consulted with legal counsel. I could provide that board with their opinion, either at the public meeting or under the exception in NHRS A91A3 Roman numeral 2L, but I, obviously, I would always suggest the latter, so if you do want to hear what the attorney had to share with me, I'd be happy to do that in a non-public session. That said, I do believe the planning board can start the process. I do believe it's complete for review purposes, hold the public hearing, relay any initial concerns or comments the board may have, and then table the application to a later date, which will allow the applicant to file an application for the next ZBA meeting and reappear before the board in the event they are successful in securing relief. Because there are no waivers requested in conjunction with this application, but for the variance, it would be a very simple, straightforward, minor subdivision that creates a conforming lot, a lot that conforms to our zoning ordinance. So I have no issue with the, with the plans outside of Doug Eastman, you know, has determined that a variance is required.
So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that would go into a private, non-public session under NHRS A91-A:3 Roman numeral 2, as outlined in Town Planner Dave Sharples' memo.
Little L.
Little L.
With the L.
And I'll second, please?
Okay, second.
Do we have a vote?
Yeah, we need a vote. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Do we need to do it individually for a non-public?
To go to a non-public session, yeah?
Yeah, I think we have to do it individually, don't we? Or does it not matter?
Okay, you can do that.
Let's do it.
Do it individually.
Let's do it.
Okay, yes.
Roll call.
Roll call. Start with you, Nancy.
That's why I couldn't come up with, thank you. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
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 You're unanimous? We are going to, we need to leave the room. We're going to run downstairs.
Okay. 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 Okay.
Can I put them back in, please?
And I'll let.
Thanks. Yeah, I'll let them in in a second.
We're back. I'm getting the non-public step down pretty good.
Be doing it. I don't do it frequently, so it's.
Yeah, just.
I can do that.
I'll have Henry talk first, and then you can make the sound.
I'll go first, just to set the right expectation for them coming out of this. Yeah, if you don't mind.
No, I don't mind.
Oh, wait a minute. Yeah. Yeah, you don't even have to do that, actually. That's right. Because the minutes are, David formed the board of the legal advice he received regarding the minor subdivision. No action or motions were taken.
So we don't have to seal them because that's it?
Correct. They can, they can.
Mr. Chairman, open the door now.
Yes, please.
Okay, all right.
Yep. What time is it?
It is 7:30.
7:32. Nobody went home.
No.
No.
Chair, 7:32.
I know, it's kind of uncomfortable.
Got it.
All right, Henry, I just want to give you guys some feedback.
Excuse me, I think we need to reopen the meeting?
David, do we need to do anything to reopen, or are we back? We voted to go into non-public, we voted to come out of non-public.
Yes, we did, okay.
So you're back, yeah. I don't think so.
Excuse me, go ahead.
That's all right. So what just happened, just so you know, we had a legal opinion as the status of this application, that whenever this board, our practice, if we get a legal opinion, is that we listen to that legal opinion, we actually have the attorney here, or our planner, or both, and they'll give us that opinion in private. So it's confidential between this board and legal counsel. So we heard that, we discussed briefly regarding that, to determine how to handle your application, specifically with the fact that, as David Sharple's outlined, you're here without the necessary variance, which is, you know, not a nothing variance to have the septic proper, because that's a big part of a subdivision on a lot that's going to require a septic and a well. So ordinarily, we wouldn't hear this case, as Henry well knows. But you guys are caught in a weird timeframe, sort of a, there was a probably window of opportunity where you would have had all your ducks in a row and been here, and you had your ducks in a row, and then the ducks changed. And you didn't quite catch all the ducks, right? So we're empathetic to that, I think the town is empathetic to that, and for that reason, we are going to hear your presentation if you want to present going forward this evening. We won't be taking any action tonight. We've never taken action, as Dave also outlined, on a case that didn't have the necessary variances. And one of our concerns, one of my personal concerns, is that if we have this whole dialogue with you folks, and we go all back and forth, and we take action and potentially approve your subdivision, that could put influence on the zoning board, which is kind of the cart before the horse. So just trying to explain that to you folks, we are empathetic. We hate, I personally don't like making people come back to more meetings, and I try to, I personally try to streamline that the best I can, my record will stand by that. But in this case, we're only going to listen. So it's up to you.
Well, I thank you for the opportunity. For the record, I'm Henry Boyd with Millennium Engineering, and with me is Rick Schaefer, Debbie Schaefer, and their daughter Chrissy. Chrissy's the real reason that we're here. She's seeking from her kind parents a building lot, which we've done this, and I guess, and this isn't for this discussion, but I guess we're a little bit, I'm a little disappointed for them, because we were in front of the zoning board in November, and the zoning variance that we saw was specifically septic-related. And we feel that, well, I feel kind of bad, because it seems like if it was in the works, it should have been discussed. Nothing against the zoning board, because they were fine, and they were great people, and they are, and I've worked for them before. But it was quite a shock, obviously, that they go on from that, and they spend the money to do the survey, and they had the wetlands delineated, and we've had test pits done, and all of those things, and then get to submit this application, and it's like, oh, you can't do this. So I do appreciate all of the things that you said, Aaron, because I know that you don't want to influence the board, even though I don't believe that you should be able to, because they're a quasi-judicial board, and they can do whatever they want. And they should do what they do when you have meet the five hardship criteria. But just briefly, this lot is very, very large. Rick and Debbie live here. The lot is 21 acres, and what we're seeking to do is create for Chrissy a five-acre lot, which would be bordered on the northeast by the Exeter River, the west by her parents, of course, Powder Mill Road, and then the B&amp;M Railroad. We did a lot of work out here to prove where not only the flood zone lines are, this is in the regulatory floodway for the Exeter River, and FEMA has done specific mapping out here to determine what the base flood elevations are. This is a really odd situation, where if you see an AE zone, anything with an A on it is a flood zone. Anything with an E behind it signifies that FEMA has determined what the elevation is. The E stands for elevation. But in this case, in a lot of cases where you have relatively flat property, they will do what's called these transect lines, which actually determine what the area of the base flood elevation, and it's to the tenth of a foot, so it's not just a foot. So from here, this is 33.7 is the base flood elevation, and then as you migrate to the west, it's 34.4. One of the things that is interesting to know in this situation, and I applaud the town, actually, for coming up with this, with the new ordinance, because I think it's smart. Unfortunately, sometimes, and I'm talking a little bit about this, because I know the planning board is the one that says that the townspeople should vote on these things, sometimes zoning ordinance will capture pieces of property that probably shouldn't be captured, or at least portions of it. And I don't think that there's a problem, per se, with the ordinance, because I think it does the right thing. So if you think that it's not good to have a septic system in the floodplain, well, that's kind of a no-brainer. But when you think about that, you're initially thinking that the base flood elevation, or the theoretical elevation for the highway, if the good Lord sends a flood here, is up here, and the septic system is down here, it's a problem, because the floodwater would surround, inundate, and overtop the septic system. That's not a good situation. So in any riverine situation where you have like this, where you have an adjacent floodway, and you have an AE zone, which Mr. Sharple has correctly pointed out, you would have that septic system in jeopardy. However, you'll see that the base flood elevation is elevation 34.4. The ground elevation here is 34.4, going up to about 37. So Dave had spoken about us receiving a variance from the water table, because you have a very, very strict water table regulation for test pits in this town. Most of the town of Exeter is on sewer, but anything out here, there's no sewer in this part of town. So everything's septic. The state does not have that regulation, but in this case, it kind of favors the town and the Schaefer's, because we're going to be four feet above the estimated seasonal high water table with the bottom of the septic system, which means that if the base flood elevation is at where my feet are, and the bottom, the estimated seasonal high water table is 17 inches, that means that I'm coming up four feet from that, so the bottom of that field is going to be almost three feet above the ground, or two and a half feet above, and then there's another two feet to the top of it. So the thought that water from the river, floodwater, could get to the septic system, it's not possible in this case. And that's why I say, I don't have a problem with the ordinance, but as it applies to this. So we certainly believe that this is more than a meritorious case for the zoning board to rightfully grant the variance. They saw it fit to grant the variance the first time for that. It's a very large piece of property. Chrissy actually has two children and four foster children that she raises, and that's why she needs this home. It's a large piece of property, it can support it, very, very good people, and I know you don't base your decision on good people, but I would like to think, I mean, I've been in front of this board a lot of times over the years, and I think you're very thoughtful, and you do what's right, and I would like to think that this is the case. I don't happen to agree that you can't grant this, or that it sets a precedent, but I'm not going to argue and push you or anything like that, you know that's not my nature. I do believe that you can grant this subdivision based upon a condition that they receive a variance. And there's some thought, our attorney believes that we don't even need the variance because of the earlier relief that was granted, but I'm not here to argue that either. I think that they should be able to get this subdivision, is my feeling. So like I said, we're not arm wrestling tonight, he'd probably beat me anyway, but I just want to advocate for my client and say that I do believe that you're well within your right, even though this board hasn't. I work in about 62 different towns, and not that it's customary, but it's not unheard of for a zoning, a planning board to grant a conditional approval. If you grant the approval and the variance fails, the approval that this board granted doesn't stand. So there's another thought, I'm not going to get into it too much, but I think that you have a right to grant a five-acre subdivision. Whether that can be built on is the building department's decision. Or in this case, if a variance necessary, he'd have to get a variance first before he could get a septic design. But we're asking not for a septic design tonight, we're asking for an approval of a five-lot subdivision. Excuse me, five-acre subdivision, not five lots, pardon me. Thank you. That'd be something different. If that were the case, I'd say, Henry, get out of here. But anyway, we're not asking for a septic design approval tonight, we're asking for a five-acre, single-lot subdivision. So with that, if you get any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, otherwise, I'll be quiet.
Well, Henry, I want to thank you for your honesty in your presentation. We will hold that, because it's customary that we have ZBA take care of their business first, and then it'll come to us.
Understood.
So we're reserving our decision this evening.
Okay.
I think in the best interest.
I had to try, Mr. Chairman. I had to try.
Of course, that should be paid for. And it's, I very much appreciate it that we can have a good discussion. Dave?
Just informationally, I did a little bit more research, you know, just because of the zoning board on the 15th. A, the zoning board is not involved in ordinance amendments, that lies with the planning board. But even then, the floodplain ordinance on November 15th, that language wasn't even finalized yet. So the way it works with us, we had the December 14th was the first time the planning board discussed it. Then they discussed it again on the 28th, and, well, they discussed on the 14th and said, okay, post it for the January meeting. So the ZBA couldn't even, wouldn't even have known at that time, at November 15th. So, you know, while you said, you know, disappointed, no one said anything, I don't know how they would have known, because the language was still being developed. I mean, I know a couple of you on the master plan oversight committee worked with the RPC, they came to that meeting, I think in November, and December, I think, is when we, you know, kind of started finalizing a draft. So a month before it, there wasn't even any final language yet.
And I meant no way to be disrespectful to them at all, it just seemed kind of odd, the timing was really, really quick.
Yeah.
You know, so within a month of them getting the variance, and now all of a sudden they're, obviously, we would have, you know, put something on a napkin, put it in front of the planning board, and said, we need to see you.
Well, in a good note, Dave was trying to make a 10-acre minimum in that zone.
Yeah.
And we didn't allow that.
Yeah.
Right? That was a joke, by the way. An inside joke.
That was like the five lots.
And no five-lot subdivision.
It is a very unfortunate situation, frankly, and I empathize with you folks. Like I said, we really don't try to make people come back. We do have a process. Henry, you're right to criticize us on it. It is your right to criticize us, too, and that's understood. That's also why we engage attorneys occasionally with situations like this, because I didn't say the Motel 6, and I'm not a lawyer. You know, we appreciate you coming out. We're not going to give you a lot of feedback, other than I, pretty straightforward.
Yeah, yeah. And it's just, I've gotten to know them very well. I've actually known Rick and Debbie for quite a long time, but it's been nice to know them, and I've enjoyed working on this property, and just, we need to get the ball in the end zone.
Yeah.
To that end, do you know when you will be submitting for the ZBA meeting?
I'm hoping it's tomorrow.
Okay.
I don't know. When is the deadline, Dave? Do you know?
That I don't know. I got it in the office.
It's in May. The next ZBA meeting is in May.
What's the deadline?
Probably two weeks before that.
It's like two and a half weeks, the Monday, two and a half weeks.
It's probably next week.
Yeah, probably is. Could be, very well, could be.
Yeah.
The ZBA meeting for April has been held.
Correct.
Correct, Tuesday.
Yeah.
Yeah, just a couple days ago.
So the next.
So she's asking how far ahead of the next meeting does she have to have her application?
Well, if you submit this week, you're fine.
Yeah. And that's the plan, to get everything in.
Okay.
I mean, there's nothing else to show, it's all done, so we hope to be at your next hearing after that.
Yeah, great.
I don't have my things to look.
Yeah, we do need to.
Yeah, I don't have my calendar, so it would be the May.
Yep, yep. We continue it to a date certain?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, it'd be the meeting following the ZBA meeting.
And we just got to get the date.
The 11th or the 25th?
It'd be the second one. Because the ZBA is not going to meet before the 11th, it's the, what, second Tuesday? Let me see, I'm trying.
And Dave, I'm going to assume we don't have to wait till the appeal expires on that?
No. I don't think so.
So your meeting is the May 25th?
Yeah.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, so May 25th at 7:00 PM. Did somebody like to award that motion, please, to table?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
Second.
And Gwen seconded. We'll do a voice vote, we're going for the, that second meeting in May, Jim.
Okay, so just so I get this right, let's see. This is the right schedule, 23 would be May 25th, but let me just see the zoning board is, May 1st deadline for the May 16th meeting.
Yeah, so they'll be all set.
Oh, so you got a couple weeks.
May 16th.
May 1st is the deadline for the May 16th meeting. So then the next meeting with the planning board is nine days after that on May 25th, so you table it to May 25th at 7:00 PM.
Yes, that's correct. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose? Abstention? Opposed, abstentions? Thank you very much.
If nothing else, it was nice to see you, folks.
Oh, it's always a pleasure.
Always a pleasure. Now he's being nice, see this guy?
We'll see you in a month.
See ya. Take care.
Thank you. Thank you.
Take care.
Good night.
Okay, the next thing on our agenda, or next case on our agenda, is an application of a CD Design Inc., Wakefield Thermal, for a site plan review of the proposed construction of a forty thousand square foot addition to an existing industrial building, expanded parking, loading areas, and associated site improvements on the property located at one thirty-one Portsmouth Avenue. Subject property, property is located in the CT Corporate Technology Park and C2 Highway Commercial Zoning Districts. Tax map parcel number fifty-two dash one-one-two, and it's planning board case number twenty-three dash four. And I'd ask Dave if this is ready to be heard?
Yes, in my opinion, it's complete for review purposes.
Okay, I'd like a motion, please.
I'll move.
Seconded?
Seconded.
Those in favor, please?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, that carries? And Dave, let's have you start off, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant, as you probably stated, is seeking site plan approval for the proposed construction of a forty thousand square foot addition to an existing industrial building at one thirty-one Portsmouth Avenue. It's the former Ozram Sylvania property, Ozram's still there, but it got sub, well, you know, you approved a subdivision there a while back.
Yes.
The applicant submitted a site plan review application, application plan, sporting documents dated February twenty-eighth that are enclosed in your packet. A TRC meeting was conducted on March twenty-third, and I provided a copy of the TRC comment letter dated March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, and UEI comment letter dated March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three are also enclosed. Revised plans, including a revised narrative, TRC and UEI response comment letters received March thirty-first, those are also enclosed. A second UEI letter dated April sixth was enclosed as well, and we did review, we are reviewing this mission, we did review this mission to determine if all the TRC and UEI comments have been addressed, and I did get, I just heard verbally from, well, I think in an email from UEI, that, you know, there might be a couple, you know, minor issues, but nothing that, you know, is of any significant consequence that can be, can be cleaned up. The applicant obtained a variance from the zoning board of adjustment at its September twentieth meeting to permit the proposed expansion of the non-conforming light industrial use on the property, and copy of the ZBA minutes, ZBA decision letter and meeting minutes are in your packet as well. The applicant did appear before the Conservation Commission at the February twenty-first, twenty twenty-three meeting for review of the, from a certified wetland scientist, Jay Albee, dated February fourteenth, and their New Hampshire DES expedited wetlands permit application. The commission, this is not a conditional use permit, this was a wetlands application, and I'll get to that in a moment. The commission voted to endorse the filing, and also provided additional comments unrelated to the wetland impacts, and they wanted to convey to the planning board for their review. There is, I put in a email from Kristen Murphy, with a message, forwarded message from Andrew Coff in your packet. No conditional use permit is needed, even though wetlands will be impacted, because all of these wetlands have been identified by the wetland scientists as man-made, and described in the wetlands report. And man-made wetlands, while although fall under jurisdictional wetlands to the state, they do not follow, they do not fall as a, under jurisdictional wetland regarding our buffer requirements. So if they're man-made drainage features, or man-made wetlands, they do not, they are not, we don't have any buffer regulations on them. So there was no COP, but yet there was a, an expedited wetlands permit that needed to be filed. There's no waivers, and in the, and no waivers being requested, and in the event, the board chooses to hold a site walk, I did mention the applicant, you know, to mark out the important features of the site, but I also came prepared with suggested conditions of approval in the event the board decides to act on the question, forego the site walk. And I just, I can pull out, well, without finding Kristen Murphy's email, it's somewhere in here, but I ran it by her today, there's some, some mitigation, I mean, invasive species management plan, and so forth, a couple of suggestions in there, and she reviewed the plans and so forth, and said those have been satisfied. So the applicant has, has addressed those concerns raised by the Conservation Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your service, sir.
Okay, for the record, my name is Tom Burns, I'm a senior project manager with TF Moran. We are a civil engineering firm in Bedford, New Hampshire, and we are the project engineers for this development. With me this evening is Matt Van Zyle, representing the applicant, CA Design Inc. And as Dave outlined, the proposal is for a redevelopment of the former, or what is part of the Ozram Sylvania site, or a former portion of the Ozram site, this was a portion that was subdivided off. The existing building that is on the site today is approximately sixty-one thousand square feet, plus or minus, it's a largely single-story building, about thirty-seven feet high, does have a partial second, second level in it. That building was built around nineteen seventy-eight. There is existing, there's some existing broken-up gravel parking that is being built today, and located along the east side of the existing building. The property, the access to the property is through GTE Drive, which I'll get to in a moment, but we are proposing to add a second, or primary access to it. There is a large number of utilities that run through the site, including sewer, drainage, water, and gas, that run through where the proposed building envelope is, that, and I, again, I'll get to that, to address that as well. But the, as Dave mentioned, we, the property was granted a variance from the ZBA in September to allow an expansion of the existing non-conforming use, the light industrial use in the C2 zoning district on this site. And so with that being done, that we then proceeded forward with the, with the design plan for CA Design, which is the presentation plan that you have before you, the color plan. And what the proposal is, is to take the existing building, as it stands today, to renovate that building, and to construct a two hundred by two hundred, or forty thousand square foot, single-story addition to the building along its southwest side, so that's that, the darker red square, that would be the proposed building addition. In addition, they would, in addition to the, the structure itself, we would be proposing to expand and rebuild the parking area on the site, including adding a new loading area and parking accommodations for up to a hundred and fifty vehicles on the site. Actually, we have a hundred and fifty-three spaces that we would, that we would propose. The, the primary access to the site would be through a new driveway that would be constructed, that would come in off of Holland Way, through an approved curb cut that's out there today. This would allow us to take the bulk of the vehicle traffic that currently goes out, that would go out to GTE Drive, and out to Portsmouth Ave, and it's going to reduce all those turning movements coming off of GTE, and out on the Portsmouth, and put it out on the Holland Way instead, which, which helps reduce some of the traffic impacts in the area. The, again, looking at existing utilities, there's an existing water main that runs through the site that we would be working around. There's existing sewer and drainage that run under the proposed building footprint today, we would route those, we propose to reroute those around the building, and redirect that sewer and drainage that ties in, including the existing Ozram sites, sewer and drainage tie into it, and continue it around the site. The stormwater for the site, for, for the site would require a fairly large system, this is a little over nine acres, the parcel itself, and we're proposing to, to develop about six acres of it from, or alter it from its existing condition as it stands today. So, to facilitate that, we would have a closed drainage system that would capture all the generated stormwater runoff from the site, including from the driveway, the parking areas, roof runoff, and we would run that closed drainage network to a large StormTech subsurface drainage system that would be in the loading area, which, take the, take the microphone, I can identify it on the plan here. So this area here, this large loading area, there would be a StormTech subsurface drainage chamber system that would be under this area here, that would be sized to capture all the volume of the stormwater runoff being generated by our site. It would provide treatment of the collected runoff through both an isolator row and the StormTech system, which would help us meet eighty percent or greater TSS removal, total suspended solids removal. And additionally, we would have two jellyfish, contact jellyfish units, which are water treatment units. The combination of those and the StormTech allow us to achieve the sixty percent requirements for total phosphorus and total nitrogen removal from the treated stormwater. Once the stormwater is captured and treated through this system, it would be tied into the drainage system, which would route, continue to route around the building to an existing head wall that's on our site today, that's approximately in this area here, towards the edge of the wooded buffer. And that head wall drains this site, as well as Ozram site, into a drainage swale that runs down here into a large existing stormwater management system on this adjacent lot, and that stormwater management system captures both the runoff, collects both the runoff from these sites today, as well as from the shopping plaza up here to the north as well. So all these sites, as they are, drain down here. So when we look at the drainage, one of our goals is to make sure that we have no increase in generated runoff going offsite, and no increase in generated volume in all the required storms. And we were able to achieve that, again, through the sizing of the StormTech system that's on the site. As part of that, review for that, we will also, we have an NHDES alteration of terrain application that is required, and that's, that's under review right now at DES. As Dave mentioned, the existing man-made wetlands, which were, basically exist, they were drainage ditches that were created when the prior development was put in, and the parking was put in. So there's one that sits right here, in the middle of the gravel parking today, there's a portion of one here, and there's one over in here, and then there was also one over in here, and they were all depressions that were put in that were the result of the grading that was done in the prior development. So as was stated, so the wetland scientists went out, reviewed them, determined that those were man-made wetlands. We came before the Conservation Commission who agreed, having viewed the site, and we filed with NHDES for an, for a dredge and fill permit, and we did receive that permit, I believe it was last week, I think I copied, I sent it to Barb. But we do have the, so we have the wetlands permit in hand as well, and there would be a sewer discharge permit as well to DES for the, for the sewer runoff, basically, partly because anytime you add sewer structures on the site that are tying into a municipal sewer system, you have to get a new permit for that, for DES, because they account for the structure, the new structures being put in. So we'll be filing for that as well. The building itself, just touching briefly on the building, I believe in the packets you have, I can call up the architectural plans as part of our plan set. So the building, the, the proposed building is going to be insulated metal panels, insulated metal panel building for the manufacturing facility. It would be a light gray in finish that would be consistent, trying to match with the existing color of the building that's out there today. The existing building is proposed to be renovated, including on the facade of it, on the, the easterly side of it, facing the, the parking area that we have proposed in the plan and where the main entrance is. The applicant's proposing to do faux wood, faux wood panels on that, along with, and then on the corners, having the, to tie into the design for this building, would have the insulated metal panels on the corners with glass, to really dress up that building, doing, doing a lot of renovation to try to improve the, the look of this building. Again, if I can just go back to the presentation, so, presentation plan. So again, as you can see where the building is located, so just touching on it again, so this, again, this would be insulated metal panel, light gray in color, and then coming around this whole area, this would be the faux wood panels with metal on the corners, metal and glass on the corners. The building itself, because the proposed addition's only about twenty-three feet high, and again, the existing is thirty-nine, it's not going to be visible from, from the roadways at all, so it's not visible from Portsmouth Ave, it's not going to be visible from Holland Way, both by the fact that it's going to be screened by the existing building, as well as the existing vegetated buffer that's going to be remaining around the site that's there today, and it's about four hundred feet or so from, from the roadway. So it's, and the grade out at the roadway is around fourteen feet higher than the finished floor of the building. So, kind of tucked away back in there. Again, all told, the, the proposed building, when it's, when it's up and running at peak production, they're proposing a hundred and fifty employees on the site, and they would be over a span of three shifts when it's, when they're, when they're at their peak. We did look at traffic, we, we submitted a traffic, traffic analysis for proposed trip generation along Holland Ave for cars going out there, and it was found that the, the trip impacts be, would be pretty minor on Holland Ave, that the road and the intersections have more than enough capacity for it, but the AM peak and the PM peak, the PM peak would be the highest, it'd be about thirty trips in a peak hour, and then the Saturday peak would be about seven trips in the peak hour on a Saturday. So relatively minor impact, but has the ability to, to really rehabilitate the site and bring another manufacturing operation into town, and, and, you know, with that, I, myself or Matt would be happy to answer any questions that the board has.
Questions?
You can open it to the public real quick?
Oh, we could open it to the public, and do two things at once?
Yes, sure.
Well, open to the public.
Anybody want to make a comment from the public?
If so, please step to the microphone. And introduce yourself, so the viewers at home will know who you are. Thank you. Saying none, I'm going to close the public session. Now we can deliberate some more from the.
I had, I had a question.
Got a question to start off with?
approval with the April sixth. That's, I, I can pull that up in a second, but let me, where, which one, which one are we talking about?
All right, I can, I can just go forward, if you want to, if you want to jump in, just, please jump in. So, in general, I think this application has been a good example of the work an applicant can do prior to coming to us, within the town system, you know, with our engineers and with our boards and our management staff. So, it's really nice to see that, it makes it easy for us when we get an application, this much dialogue is already taken care of. But it does look like, to me, like there's still a few that are probably knocking away. So I don't know, do you want to run through this stuff from, from UE now?
Yeah, we did, yeah, I'd be happy to go through, so I did get the, so I saw the letter this morning, we hadn't received the comments from Underwood, but I found it when I was downloading the, the agenda and then the packet tonight, so.
Sure.
Do you want me to go through everything?
If you don't mind, I mean, just touch them, you can just say number seven, for example.
Yeah, so, sure, for number seven, for the, the sewer pipe, so we did take a look at that today, and so the, the note was that, that the pipe, the pipe run was pretty shallow running through there, so we did have slopes that were very shallow, they are allowable slopes, I should note that they're, they're allowable slopes by sewer design based on the pipe diameter, so, that they'll allow for scouring of the pipes and for free flow through the pipes. However, we did take a look at that.
So I'm sorry, you're saying they are allowed?
They, the, yeah, so the point oh oh four that is referenced, so that is an allowable slope for the pipe.
All right.
for the pipe.
So the first sentence of their feedback letter?
Less than required, yeah, less than required minimum, it's, that isn't allowed slope for the, the pipe diameter. That being said, so I'm just touching on it, but that being said, we did take a look at it, and as she noted, there are, there were some ways to, to adjust it, so we can adjust the sewer run. So it's just a matter, it's a matter of adjusting the run between a couple of structures. So it's not like it's the entire pipe network through, or that it's, it somehow compromises the, the design. So we already took a look at that in the office, we're going to, we're going to do that update. We obviously weren't going to bring a revised plan for that, for this evening. The buoyancy calcs for the structures, we did not encounter any groundwater in the test pits that were done out here. One of the things we, we encountered was that there was a lot of clay, and there was a restrictive layer out there. But we didn't, we didn't run into groundwater at all, which is why we hadn't prepped any buoyancy calculations for this. We typically wait if DES asks us for a buoyancy calc, we, we calculate and provide it. And I think the, as the reviewer noted, they were deferring the further response to DES because that alteration of terrain will have us look at that if they have a concern. Noted the sewer manhole invert response, however, the drawings don't appear to be updated. It looks like it was, so it was on our existing conditions plan, there was a label on one of the structures, it sounds like, 48E on our existing condition plan, and it wasn't adjusted on the ex-con plan. So we asked our surveyor to correct it on, on his plan. And then comment 12 was the waterline response, however, the drawings don't appear to be updated. So the utility, so again, this was, the utility plan that we have showed the waterline, I think it was the existing conditions plan that needs to be, the, so we have to have our surveyor just update on his existing conditions plan. Comment 18, grading and drainage, drainage manhole 23 listed two pipe inverts where three were shown. And it's, there are two inverts, there's an errant line that's shown indicating a third line coming out, but they only, there were two inverts that were located, so they're going to correct that as well. So you mean, those are really, they're more of housekeeping and just kind of cleaning up some line work on those. And then landscaping, so I met with our landscape architect this morning. We turned on, so this was, and it was a comment that came through, and, you know, and I apologize that we didn't catch it, was one of the comments was to turn the utility lines on, on the landscape plan for the resubmit, so they could see where all the utility lines were on, on the stamped landscaping plan, and the lines just didn't get turned on, on that sheet. But what I had him do, so we, I went over this with the landscape architect, so there's, as it notes, comment A, a red oak tree is shown just outside the Exeter Water Works easement. The tree should be positioned so the roots of the tree will not interfere with the existing water mean in general or during future replacement. He had held a minimum distance off the waterline, and I instructed him, I said, you should hold that minimum distance off the easement, because if the waterline needs to be reconstructed in the future, you can go all the way to the edge of the easement. So he moved it out, I believe it's at least another 10 feet off, to make sure he was maintaining the distance off the easement line. A London plane tree planted atop a drain line at the southeast corner of the building addition, he's relocated that. Conflicts between the proposed trees and the waterlines running between GTE Drive and the new parking opposite the loading docks, so that, see if I can take the microphone. So that's the, that's the cluster of landscaping, and he's actually updated it on this plan. So this, this block of landscaping was up along this edge of parking, and that's where the existing waterlines run underneath the parking and under this edge. So he shifted the, he shifted all the plants away from it. This was on the previous comment, this one here was lying on a drain line, he shifted that over, and then he relocated a few plantings as well to, to keep the quantities and the varieties, but pulling them away from the utilities. It's, it is a very busy site in terms of subsurface utilities. Conflicts between existing drain lines in the southeast corner of the site and the proposed trees, and that's the, there were some, it was these trees here as well, and I think he had, this one here was originally falling within the easement, so he shifted it out of the easement, and, and he shifted those accordingly as well. He may have moved that one as well. But we went through, we went through them today, so that he, as he was preparing this, the colored presentation, he wanted to correct those. And then the detail...
So that's the new plan?
This is the updated, yeah, this is the updated plan with moving them, moving them out of the easements or making sure that they're clear of the easements. Again, it was, when he looked at the utility lines, he had them when he was doing his design, and he tried to make sure he was only putting shrubs within easements, things like that, so that...
We can't see utility lines on there, right?
Right, he turned it off, oh, you're right, on the color, yeah, he turned it off just to, for the color presentation.
It would be nice to see.
We can certainly, yeah, and we can certainly, for final plans, for final smittles or mylar's, we, you know, we can turn them on, we'll go through and make sure all these, you know, all these items, these housekeeping items are corrected. And typically with alteration of terrain, we get comments, we usually get a handful of comments as well, so those get incorporated, and we have to add their approval notes to the, the cover sheets, things like that. So there will be a final set of revisions that, before any mylar's or final prints are made. The last comment was on the detail sheet, the isolator row detail. So there is a note, there was a, this manufacturer's note about an insert that's put in into the isolator row, and on the, the initial round of comments, there was a comment about not using that insert. And so we removed the note from the plan, so there wouldn't be any confusion with it. And the manufacturer basically stated what the intent of that insert is, is you put it in so that until the system comes online, you're not getting, it's basically helps keep the system closed, so you're not getting any erosion, any, any, any site materials getting into it, or any debris getting in the system. And then when you're ready to put your stormwater system online, kind of like the way when you have a silt sack or a dandy bag in a catch basin, you keep those in, collecting site runoff, and then you pull them when you're done, it's the same thing, you pull the insert. And so she was noting that the insert should be used during construction to protect the system from construction debris. So we'll put, we're going to put the note back on that, that we took off, because that was the prior request, those that we weren't going to use, that we shouldn't use the insert. But we'll put it back on, and we'll just make sure that the language of it from the manufacturer says that it's to be removed, you know, it's to be removed upon completion of construction and prior to introduction of stormwater flow.
Thank you very much. Very much appreciate your response. I know it's kind of on the fly, but it is all housekeeping, really, other than you may encounter a little more dialogue on the landscape with this board.
I did find the, the email from Allison that followed up, because I asked her about these comments. And she wrote, hi Dave, just wanted to note that these comments are minor, and we don't note anything from our end to hold up approvals, just some things to clean up before construction. Thanks, Allison.
Yeah, great. That was me. There's Mike.
Hi, ready Glenn or Jen?
I just had a question about, so there aren't a whole lot of trees on the site today, but there is going to be some tree removal or adjustment of the existing tree line, and I was wondering if any of those trees were significant in size, because if so, they should be showing up on the survey.
Right, so we had had our surveyors go out, and they were looking at the trees and looking for the caliper, for the 20-inch caliper. And they had come back and said the area where we're proposing a clear on the plan, that they didn't see anything when they were out and checking the trees. So we have, the tree clearing we're going to have again is where that driveway's coming in, the, I guess you just keep holding on to it.
They do have laser printers, pointers, you know.
So we have, we have tree clearing here, and then there's going to be tree, tree clearing in this, right in here, to open this up, to bring the driveway in. This again is the, the existing site, this is all open. Does the existing fire, this is the existing fire access drive actually comes around here now, and comes in through here, and we're just going to extend it over to here. But they didn't, they didn't see anything when they went out and, and were checking for calipers on it. And it's something we are used to doing on, in, on, on sites, that we have to go out and we locate trees of significance and note species and, and the, the diameters of the trees when they find them. But they, they didn't find anything that met the criteria here.
Okay, thanks for verifying. Yeah, my only other comment, I mean, on the landscaping side, is I think the landscaping plan, in terms of diversity of species and just the number of trees being added back, is, is nice to see. You know, especially given it's such a barren site now, this will actually, I think, add more trees to the site and more, more shade. So I think that's great. And then I did just have a question about lighting and photometrics.
Yes.
And it's like really hard to read the plans, but I just want to make sure that, you know, that the lighting fixtures being specified are sending light down onto the site and not out into the wild.
Yes, they're downcast, yes, downcast fixtures, yep.
And you're not, light's not leaving the property, correct?
No, the, so I can pull up the, may I help on this one, to pull up the lighting plan?
The photometrics are like, like some of them, some of them are just dots and some of them are actual numbers, so it's hard to tell. I think some of the numbers are missing.
Yeah, it is, it is hard on this scale to read, but the, the lighting engineer, the, the lighting engineers that we use, yeah, they, everything is designed with downcast lighting with no light spillage off the site. So typically what they'll do is they'll show it down to the .1 or, or 0.0 foot candles coming off, which is usually what, and that's, that's what he's doing. I know it's hard to see on this, but they do meet the, they do meet the lighting standards for, for trying to avoid having light spillage off of the site.
Dark, dark sky.
Yes.
Being a 24-hour operation, those lights will be on 24 hours a day, I mean, at night?
Yeah.
I had a question for you, and it's just a question. When you deal with the invasive species, do they ever just tell you to get rid of them?
No, so, so it's an, this is an interesting site, given its location and with all the projects that we work on. So this site had no hits from the natural heritage bureau for any species on the site itself in terms of protected species. So there's usually, so when that happens, we don't have any additional correspondence that we have to have with fish and game. Typically, what, what happens is, is if an invasive species is encountered, and we include notes in our plans for it, is that they're supposed to contact, and we provide the contact number on it, that they contact fishing game, they alert them, and there's, there is a plan that's outlined as to what they have to do, whether it's a vegetative species or it's a, you know, if there's an animal that's found on the site or any type of, you know, any type of species like that. It was odd that the site, given its location, didn't have any hits for anything. But, but no, they, we do, we do include notes for them that they're, they're supposed to contact fishing game and that there is, they're supposed to develop the plan for, for how they're supposed to work around them. Because, you know, a site like this with the man, with the manmade wetlands, there's potential that there could be a vegetative, a species in there that would be considered invasive, and so they have to be careful, they don't want to spread that around the site. And so it's one of the things you look at, is like with soil contamination, making sure that it's not, you're not spreading it. But, but yeah, no, they don't usually just, yeah.
Yeah.
Now, you spoke about their stormwater management and container storage underneath really the trucking area.
Yes.
I'm just assuming that that is installed to be compatible with the weight of the vehicles coming and going.
Yes, it has, yes, it's designed for H20 loading, so it's designed for the, for the trucks and everything that come through.
Another question I have is just no, no big deal, but why is not the new addition roof line going to be same as the other?
Um...
I don't know.
I mean, I can kind of speak to it from an architectural standpoint, it's just when they're joining the roof structures and sealing along that, that line, it's easier if the new existing, or if the new structure is beneath the existing structure, just from a...
Makes a better deal.
From an integration standpoint of the new structure to the old structure.
And traffic wise, your results is, doesn't, there's no need to make a wider lane on 88?
Right, correct, no mitigation would be required based off of the trips that are being generated.
Because you're, you're introducing all the traffic that's going to come out of there. Yeah.
This, the, the eastern, eastern side of the proposed building is, that's a look, I'm, I'm still not quite clear on what the use of that side of the building is, is that actually a loading zone? Is that like where you're on the GTE Drive side of the, of the proposed building? And there's a white, there's a white, is it like concrete retaining wall that sticks out from that, like right there?
Yeah, that's a ramp.
That's a ramp.
Yes, so in this location here, there will be, there's going to be the, the dock height doors, so four-foot dock height doors. And then this will be a drive-up door, so that's a ramp going up to four feet to come up to the finished floor height inside. So that will be a drive-up concrete ramp with retaining wall on either side of it. And then these will be the dock, this will be dock height doors. So these will be, the grade will be four feet below finish at the building.
The reason I asked is that, not being clear as to what was happening in that side of the building and whether it was being accessed by large trucks, I was just curious as to why that parking lot was, needed to be as big as it is, but it's because you're going to have big trucks.
It allows for the turning movements of the trucks, correct?
While you're there, what about snow storage?
So we have, yeah, we indicated some snow storage areas for this parking area to have a snow storage area located off pavement over here, and then for the parking area here, snow storage areas along this edge here.
And another one down.
Oh, and another snow storage, yes, right along here as well.
Okay.
Dave, I had a question for you on this. In your memo, on the fourth paragraph, you bring up that the applicant obtained a variance from the zoning board of adjustments at its September 20th, 2022 meeting to permit the proposed expansion, existing non-conforming light industrial use on the property, cut the ZBA decision letter, and meeting minutes are enclosed for your review. I know when we were redoing zoning in our discussions, committee discussions, we were trying to avoid the necessity of these variances.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
So as it states today, if he made this application today, would he need that variance?
We didn't, we haven't moved forward with those amendments yet.
All right. But if we're, our proposal, if we have our way, wouldn't need this variance, correct?
Yes, the proposal we are working through, in the draft we worked through, but we just wasn't ready for primetime March, gave a little bit less, less focus on use, more about form.
Right. So that's...
Particularly along this corridor. I mean, and, you know, to, to allow some light industrial. But right now, light industrial is not in allowed use in their zone. So Doug determined that, you know, it's a non-conforming use, so any expansion would need variance, zoning relief.
Which is, seems appropriate, but if things go forward in the direction that we're trying to be proactive with, this would be an unnecessary variance, hopefully, in the near future. So I just wanted to make, bring, have that discussion we do, and also make our board, our full board, aware of that. That although they got a variance, hopefully in the future, this would be an unnecessary hurdle for a future applicant in this type of situation, because we really don't want to make it harder for somebody to take a property like this and utilize it more efficiently.
Yeah, yeah, even if, I think that actually what it was covered under, now that I think about it, it wasn't necessarily light industrial uses were necessarily allowed in the zone, in the new zone moving forward, the new...
No, it's the non-conforming expansion.
However, as non-conforming uses were allowed to expand to the setbacks and so forth, to recognize that they exist, so they should be allowed to expand without requiring a variance. And, and we, we kind of, we have that language, yeah, teed up, if you will, but that would be until March 24.
Trying to clean it up, yeah.
So we're seeing an example before the fact.
We've seen it, yeah, you've seen, hopefully, and they have the variance anyway, so it didn't cause them hopefully too much hardship. But we're trying to make it easier in the future, because non-conforming uses get kind of caught up in zoning sometimes, and the use is fine, you know, so.
It's been there for years, a long time.
Right.
How far is it from GTE Drive to the Water Works pond about?
Lang, you're asking questions, just as I'm about ready.
Oh, okay, go ahead, you take it.
No, no, that was the exact question I had.
Well, I guess I've been with you long enough.
Just funny that you're, we're thinking along the same lines.
See, it's on the existing conditions plan.
Yeah, great.
So there's GTE Drive.
250 feet away from GTE Drive or so?
Right.
Just a little over a couple hundred feet from GTG Drive is the edge of the line.
Ozram building, really? Yeah.
Right, if you're, yeah, well, that's actually a good way to reference it, so the existing Ozram building, that building projects probably... That building projects probably, I'm just looking at this space relative to our building. That building projects probably about another 150 feet closer to the Water Works Pond than our building does, than the, than our addition does.
Yeah, that's good.
Do you, do you want to discuss, um, the letter from the Conservation Commission at all? I mean, it, it sounds like you had a good meeting, productive meeting, a positive meeting.
Yes.
And that they agreed to sign your plan and that they just kind of requested, they kind of communicated with us and it's very open process about the invasive species management plan and the stormwater management, which are probably part of your standard operating procedure anyway, but you probably echo those concerns.
Yeah, and I believe, was that, I believe you had mentioned that, right, that they, um, Krista Murphy, she, they had.
Yeah, Krista Murphy told me today that they did provide an invasive species management plan and also the stormwater management. They just wanted the water department to be aware because of the proximity to our surface water reservoir. And we emailed Steve Dalton. Steve Dalton responded, thank you very much, and DPW participated in the TRC review.
Yeah.
So, everything was, you know, those, those comments, those two comments from the Conservation Commission were addressed.
It's basically when we went to conservation, so part of it was when you do, um, a dredge and fill permit, you go before the Conservation Commission for it. So this was a minimum expedited dredge and fill permit to, again, to, to fill those manmade, those drainage ditches that are in, in the parking area today. So that's when I went in with them. They said, you know, would you be willing to discuss some of these other items? Do you have a problem with us making recommendations? I said, no, it's, you know, that's fine. Happy to have them involved. Cause again, these are things we typically have to address anyway, especially when we have a, a project that goes before alteration of terrain. You know, there's, it's, it's quite a vetting process, so. But yeah, so that's why we have, yeah, we had no wish of going forward with it. So it was, it was a good, it was a productive meeting. So they, I, and I'm not sure who it was, I mean, one of them, not putting words in their mouth, but one of them noted that, they said a lot of times they have people come in and say they have manmade wetlands. And they said, in this case, looking, having gone out to the site, they said, this was one of those sites that they said, yeah, those are manmade. So, but she had noted that, she said, they get a lot of, a lot of people come in that say that the wetlands are manmade on the site.
Yeah, yeah. Questionable maybe, interpretation. Interesting.
What's your timeline?
May I have a couple of questions?
Oh, certainly, go right ahead. I was waiting for you to speak.
EV charging stations. My eyes were not good enough. There you go. As to find them. Uh, you said they're gonna be located somewhere and my eyes couldn't find them. But again, going through the question of the EV charging stations to begin with, you are saying you're gonna have four or you're proposing four?
Yes, the EV, yes, so we're gonna have four, uh, stations that are gonna be for EV charging vehicles. There'll be these spaces here. There's four spaces in here.
Okay, so they're all located in one spot?
Yes.
There happen to be four charging stations? Those will be such that will be available to, uh, visitors as well as to, uh, employees?
Uh, I would defer to Matt, how they're gonna handle them.
Okay, so that, and each, each of the charging stations will be, well, I guess they are, are there, well, we're, we're thinking, we're hearing a lot about the increased use of EVs. And it seems to me that, that, um, four may or may not, I guess the question is, how did you come down with four?
Cause that's what our regulations require.
Oh, okay, that's, that's.
Two, two percent. And it's not an EV charging station that's required. It's EV charging readiness. So the stalls need to be equipped underground with conduit and go to a panel with a dedicated circuit available. That's all we ask. If they don't want to put in the charges at first, or, you know, there's not a demand for them, then they don't have to. But if, what, if and when they do, then they can just pull the wire through and, and do it easily without any excavating.
But you're putting in a.
Well, we'll have provisions in place.
Oh, that's different.
Yeah, and we're deciding on, uh, whether or not installing them at the time of, uh, construction or later on. But we will have the provisions in place with the, you know, meeting.
Was it your site though at the TRC? Didn't someone, was it your company said, yeah, I just bought a, they bought a F-150 electric vehicle?
Yeah, they're.
Okay, yeah, they were like, yeah, me, you know, like in the TRC meeting. It was like, yeah, it was like someone was voting for it.
But this seems to be something that's, that's just around, well, I will call it just around the corner, but it's coming on us very rapidly.
Yeah, we, we.
How many parking spaces are in there? Is it four or eight?
There's, there's four spaces in that area.
So two stations?
Parking spaces, how many vehicles can be parked in that?
There'd be, there'd be four, there'd be parking for four vehicles.
Okay.
Four vehicles, not, not eight vehicles, but four.
No, but I'm, we've always talked about a charging station being located between two vehicles, so you could charge this one or that.
Well, that's, that's what I would.
Yeah, there would probably be two charging stations.
It'd be two charging stations, two to support, you know, the right two parking spots.
Right.
Two to support.
And they're all different, you know, there's different levels for the, for the type of chargers you have, whether it's a slow charger, depending upon the use, you know, whether you have a, like a rapid charger or a trickle charger, depending upon if it's an overnight use. And we typically, that's, that's what we're seeing, you know, in terms of, like you said, there's a growing, um, you know, kind of a growing demand or a growing awareness of it. We see, it's, it's generally, we're seeing with municipalities is about two percent is what they're looking for now to provide provisions for. We have some developers that try to do more, that, you know, provide more than that, or they bring a certain percentage that they want to have online to start with and they provide conduit for others, you know, down the road. But the biggest hurdle they run into is just in, is, um, existing grids, being able to support them to use a lot of electricity. It's, it's surprising how much electricity these actually use. And, um, what ends up happening is, like I have an example, as I'm doing a site in Manchester for a parking garage with the city. And the problem is, is trying to get the transformers for it. And they're talking about putting in four transformers. And they're saying two of those may just be for, just be for EV charging stations, because they just have such a high electric demand, so. And it depends on, again, which types you're using. So they're looking at if they have residents that in the city, if they have residents that are gonna live, that stay there and they plug their car in overnight, so they have, you know, a certain level charger versus people that are using the garage. It's a public garage, so they'll come in and plug in. Those will be different chargers and they all use different amounts based on it, but it's, it's amazing the demand on it.
Technology at its best.
One, can I just ask a follow up? I know you have more questions, but just on the.
These are getting asked, go ahead.
On the EV charging, and this is, do, do our regulations specify whether any of the spaces, the EV charging spaces need to be ADA accessible? Cause those four spaces are not. So if you're, have a handicap card and need to park in a handicap spot, but you have an electric vehicle, you can't take advantage. That's something we might want to consider in the future if that gets expanded, because I feel like that's an equity issue that the town should be.
And they, and they typically don't. It's, yeah, we, we, again, I just see, I see that in other communities as well. It doesn't identify that a certain, you know, if you're providing a certain percentage, that some of them have to be in accessible spaces versus, you know, versus kind of the standard spaces. It's just, they block them out, kind of similar to the way we block out accessible. We block out a area of EV stations.
This is probably something, I, I agree with Jen. I think it makes sense to get ahead of it. But, um, it's probably something where if you're an employer and you have a handicap employee and they can't get to a charging station, they can probably force you to provide one down the road. Even though you didn't prep for it, then you gotta do what you gotta do as an employer, right? I mean, I, I would think they'd have potential for that, you know? Just something to think about, you know, not, if you were in that situation as a human being, you'd probably be pretty empathetic to it, so.
My, my other question had to do with overnight part, now, I know it's three shifts, but is there going to be provision for, of, of delivery trucks and things of that nature to be parked overnight? When I say delivery trucks, I'm talking about people, 18 wheelers coming in and not being able to fully disgorge. But is there gonna be some provision for parking of that size vehicles? As opposed to most of the spots are focused on, we'll call them, uh, light trucks maybe, but normal, normal type vehicles?
So I don't know if you wanna, if you can kind of discuss what it is for trucks that you have.
We don't necessarily encounter that situation very often. Um, most, most of the trucks that come in are, are LTL picking up pallet loads and it's typically an in and out. We don't really have the situation where a truck would have to stay, you know, park overnight or we'd have to have a, a long-term provision for that truck in the parking lot. I would say it's very uncommon. I haven't, I haven't seen it, so.
Basically, you don't have a fleet that you're parking. It's, I think that's kind of the question is, you have a vehicles that are gonna be staying on site overnight.
Yeah, we don't have a fleet of trucks or anything like that.
But it'd be, it'd be more the trucks coming in and bringing materials.
Yeah, the trucks coming in, bringing materials, um, typically is a short, a short drop off. And then our finished goods would ship similarly with a, a truck coming in, um, kind of like picking up the load in less than an hour and being on its way. Um, it, it's highly uncommon that we even have full tractor trailer loads. Most of our shipments are less than loads, so.
All right, thank you.
Other questions?
I have one effect. I know the numbers are in here and I'm not finding them. The shift, so three shifts have 153 parking spots. Are you expecting to fill those parking spots for all three shifts?
You want, can you discuss kind of a breakdown of what the.
Can you use the mic too, just to make sure that folks at home?
Yeah, sure. Um, I know there's a, there's a section of parking spaces that we have in the plan that, that are future proposed, so we're not gonna build them right away. As far as our shift diversity and the amount of, and the amount of people right now, I'd say we have like 75 people per shift, um, in a much smaller facility. So that's kind of where, where we're thinking of the, uh, expansion, um, expanding our capabilities, expanding the amount of personnel that we have working. And we propose getting close to that number now to, I think, we'll use all 153 spaces, um, at one shift, probably not. And that's why we have the proposed future, future spots for, for one of the sections there, um, where they might not be needed right away.
Cause I'm, I'm glad they have the extra, the extra entrance, excuse me, stop trying to speak, it's not working so well. An entrance on Hollandway, and if they were using the light, that's great. I'm just thinking of the cumulative down the other end of Hollandway where we now have a school. And I don't remember seeing the school listed as one of the things that was taken into consideration. And I did drive by there today. There were 20 cars waiting to pick kids up, but they were off the road. But I still think we should.
Well, that's where they're down the road, isn't it?
At least be aware. It, it is, but we don't know which way people are gonna leave when they come in or out of that. So that's not for you. I just wanted to check for right now, so we have an idea of the additional potential on that road.
Yeah, and when we, in, in the, the traffic analysis that was submitted, they do look at the turning movements anticipated.
Yeah, I didn't men, I didn't see the, a school mentioned though. So I saw the Hannafords was there and whatever, and it's because it's at the other end of the road. I don't know if that's even required of you to mention the schools there. It might not have been there.
Oh, okay, cause of the.
It might not have been there when you did your traffic study, but it's there now. And I don't even know the capacity that they're at, so, you know, it's, it's kind of a hypothetical maybe question. Thank you.
Where, where is the, the parking that you plan not to build until it's absolutely necessary? Did I beat you this time?
No. So there's a row, there's a row of parking here and here. It's a little under 30 spaces that wouldn't be built at this time, but we show them as future parking just to have them, have that count and have it as part of the plan now. But again, as, as Matt was saying, because it's kind of, it's gonna be a buildup to that, um, from the existing workforce to try to get up to that. That's kind of a goal that they're trying to get to. Um, we wanted to provide the provisions to have that, to be prepared for it.
Thinking ahead to your future.
Then I was asking before Peter interrupted me, what do you see as your build out schedule?
So construction, uh, anticipated start date with all permits was, was June was the.
Generally speaking, you know.
Yeah, June for site work, yep. And then, uh, proposed, um, the initial, so the existing structure will then fit up within the existing structure and we're expecting to, to complete that by the end of the year. And then the addition, um, by the end of Q1 of next year, so.
Well, I apologize for interrupting you.
It's entirely okay. But I won't forget that.
I know you won't.
Any other questions?
Do you ever consider, um, I, I ask this with big buildings like this often, but do you ever consider, or have you considered, um, solar panels or anything to help with your electricity cost? And just to be more environmentally friendly?
Yeah, for sure, for sure. That's something that we would definitely consider. I know some companies have, have approached us, um, when we mentioned that we were expanding, interested in the roof space. So we'll definitely consider that. Cause there's, there's a lot of potential on that roof. We're not, we're not using it much of the space but for some, you know, rooftop equipment, uh, HVAC equipment. So there's quite a bit of space up there. And there's nothing blocking it, so.
Great. That's good to hear.
One, one kind of question slash comment. Um, I think, I've been looking at this plan and thinking like, something's bugging me about it. And I think what it is, is, you know, you see the Ozram Sylvania property and there's like a whole lot of pavement. There's that big access road that goes around it. And then there's the new property and then there's like a whole lot of access road. And I was just wondering if you ever looked at maybe trying to partner the two parcels in terms of access? Cause you know, you've got like the three curb cuts sort of right in a row. And it just seems like maybe one of those, you know, those two on the right could have been consolidated and you could have kind of minimized the amount of, or reduced the amount of paving and increased the amount of green space and probably gotten the same amount of parking. I don't even know if that's something that would be possible, given that it's two separate parcels. But, um, I think part of that access drive is still GTE drive maybe? Maybe not.
Part of Ozram's is.
Yeah. I don't, is that something that you, that you considered and ruled out, or is it just like, wasn't, wasn't even ever on the table?
Yeah, I, um, you know, I can't speak to, for the applicant on it, um, from an engineering standpoint. We did look a little bit just to see if there was a means to, to connect, um, coming straight in off of Holland. But the grading in that corner, um, in the southeast corner there, this is so steep in there. It would be, it would be a challenge to really try to get, connect between our pavement and theirs because of the grade difference. So that was, that was why we didn't propose anything there. And then relative to, yeah, they, they have, Ozram has the access through GTE drive, which extends into their site. And I don't know what the exact language is for their access easements or what their, how their language is written up.
Yeah, it's just something I think that would be, you know, if, if there was some mechanism, I think, you know, on future planning projects like this where we're looking at these big industrial parcels that are, like, if they could just share some pavement, um, it would just really help.
I agree with you, Jen. That's, that's kind of bugging me too. And it's just a lot, there's a lot of pavement.
A lot of pavement.
And I don't know, I mean, do you need, given that you have a way to get onto Holland and you've got two access points on GTE drive, do you?
Yeah, do we need that access road?
Do you need both of those access points, or could you potentially get, get away with just having one? Or is that too confining for trucks?
Well, the, you know, ultimately what it does is if, um, the benefit of kind of having the addition, the, the multiple access points is, it does allow for trucks, it, it improves truck circulation. It trucks, it's not dependent on it for the trucks to get in and out. And it's not like one truck is gonna block another truck coming in, you know, we run the turning movements through it to make sure everybody can clear one another coming through. But it, it always helps in terms of the, the, the truck access as well as the fire access. When we run our fire movements around and provides them with multiple access points coming into the site. You know, so I don't, that was, yeah, I don't think it was something that we were considering looking at getting rid of. They do have, so one of, one of the driveways off of GTE is their current, is their existing driveway today, um, which is this one here.
The lower one, okay. The lower one, okay.
So that's, that's the existing drive that comes into the site now. So basically what it does is it comes in, follows this route here, comes up and around. And this is, this area here was all the, the broken up kind of old gravel parking and everything. And the old parking is through here. And so that's their access today. And so again, what we were doing was, this was a curb cut that was previously approved for this purpose that the town had gotten an approval for, to allow the curb cut to allow us to reduce the outlet of traffic out onto Portsmouth Ave from there. And then this just allows kind of the, the turning movements through here for the loading dock area. I mean, if you think about what it's, you know, if a, if a truck comes in, this allows them to swing and then back in. So they use that. So, I mean, they may not use that driveway much for an outlet, but it's good to have it just for those movements.
So you see them primarily coming in off, off Holland?
Who's them?
Where do you, where do you?
Trucks or employees?
The trucks, yeah, trucks.
Well, I think the, I mean, I think the goal, and that was, that was part of the goal of putting that driveway in on Holland was to, to try to reduce those vehicle trips down, coming in and the turning movements off of Portsmouth, the GTE. So, you know, that, that would be the expectation is you'd have passenger vehicles coming in off of Holland. And we ran the truck movements each way to make sure they all worked. I guess that would be a, you know, programming thing, how you want them, but.
If I was a truck driver, I think I'd want to go on GTE just because it's closer to the exit, but.
Well, not if you're taking a left.
Right.
If you're taking a left and you're usual to that site, you're going to probably go around Hollandway to get on a light and take a left. Instead of trying to take a left out of there.
Yeah.
Because it can be, it can be.
There's no light there, yeah.
Yeah, it can be a long way. And that's a good point. We asked that at the TRC, we tried to get them together with Osram to share, because.
Oh, did you? Okay.
Yeah. But I think the grade and so forth, we're like, share access, you know, there, we agreed with that. It just, it didn't seem to be, it didn't seem to get anywhere. Because we had asked that, I remember talking to them about accessing that site. But then they just, they had the access off GTE. So Osram will still continue to use, because we were like, why wouldn't they, you know, be able to use Hollandway? But now the way it's set up without the grades, they gotta go through the kind of, the, all sorts of turns to get out there, so.
Right.
But it was a great point, we, we, we discussed it as well.
I know, when, when we were looking at the subdivision of the parcel, we did allow the other subdivided parcel to utilize the Holland exit. But Osram was not necessarily included in, in those discussions, so. Just because of their pre-existing access to GTE road and their existing processes.
They've got their own entrance and exit, yeah. Any other concerns or questions? I'd attend a motion if somebody's interested in.
They probably need to hear some conditions.
Is that where you're at?
Conditions.
Okay.
Do we want to do a safe visit or, I mean?
We can do that.
Looking, I personally don't feel like we need to, because looking at the aerial footage, you can kind of see what's going on. But we didn't talk about it, so I just wanted to mention it.
Been out there, I'm comfortable with it without having another visit. You know, like go by there quite a bit. And with the other subdivision, I'd gone out there just to update myself. I don't think they do a site.
I'm fine. Fine, you want to go look at trees? Oh, well, I guess it's okay.
Well, if you've ever participated in the Christmas parade, you've been around there three or four times.
I've never, I've never been.
And it's a steep slope up there, you see, it's a steep slope.
See, it almost sounds.
Stand out there for three hours.
It's always cold. Always cold.
Okay.
I had one thing to add though, question, because I put in my, it was one of my comments in the letter, that section 9.2.3 of the regulations state that the, quote, "Architectural design guidelines may apply to industrial buildings," end quote, period. What does that mean? I don't know, may.
Yeah.
So I said, this will be discussed at the planning board, but it does not appear that this building will be visible from any public right of way. And even if parts of it are, it will be a considerable distance away. So I, I just kind of wanted to not, not, it's not necessarily partly to do with this, but just say, kind of, maybe define that may. And I, I was thinking the may might be that it may be if it's right on Portsmouth Ave.
Right.
It's highly visible, it's, it's on Epping Road, it's on one of our main travel corridors when you enter the Exeter. And then that may will apply. Because this one doesn't meet it, you know, the, the proposal doesn't meet it. But I, I was thinking, I was comfortable that it doesn't apply. But I just wanted to get in the record that on future ones, if it is a highly visible location where architectural standards are important, then they would apply.
May allows for discretion, shall means that.
Yes, exactly. So I just wanted to, just, just flag that, that I think TRC was okay, that the may meant no in this case. But in future cases, it might mean yes. Okay.
Fair enough.
In the meantime, I think we've got a fairly nice landscaping plan. So it isn't stuck out back, it's for the employees and the people who drive through there and have lunch or whatever.
And the birds and the.
Birds and other, yeah.
Yeah, insects.
So are you ready for our conditions?
Yes, conditions.
Suggested conditions, they're all the standard ones that you've all heard before, but I will read them.
Oh, that's good.
Because that's what I do.
You can read them, poor guy.
I got it. One, an electronic as-built plan with details acceptable to the town shall be provided prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. This plan must be in a DWG or DFX file format and in NAD 1983 State Plane New Hampshire FIPs 2800 feet coordinates. Two, all monumentation set shall be accorded, shall be, shall be set, let me read that again. Two, all monumentation shall be set in accordance with section 9.2.5 of the site plan review and subdivision regulations prior to signing the final plans. Three, a pre-construction meeting shall be arranged by the applicant and is contracted with the town engineer prior to any site work commencing. The following must be submitted for review and approval prior to the pre-con meeting. The SWIP, if applicable, be submitted to and reviewed for approval by DPW and a project schedule and construction cost estimate. Four, third-party construction inspection fees shall be paid prior to scheduling the pre-construction meeting. Five, all comments in the review letter from Underwood Engineers dated April 6, 2023 shall be addressed to the satisfaction of the town planner prior to signing the final plans. Six, all outdoor lighting, including security lights, shall be downlit and shielded so no direct light is visible from adjacent properties and/or roadways. Seven, the three, the three forms in the stormwater management report dated February 20, 2023, revised March 31, 2023, which are, one, stormwater operation and maintenance plan, two, de-icing log, and three, jellyfish filter inspection and maintenance logs shall all be completed and submitted to the town engineer annually on and before January 31. This requirement shall be an ongoing condition of approval. Eight, all applicable state permit approval numbers shall be noted on the final plans. All appropriate fees to be paid, including but not limited to sewer water connection fees, impact fees and inspection fees, including third-party inspections prior to the issuance of the building permit or a certificate of occupancy, whichever is applicable is determined by the town. Nine, all landscaping shown on the plan shall be maintained and any dead or dying vegetation shall be replaced no later than the fall and growing season, as long as the site plan remains valid. This condition is not intended to circumvent the revocation procedures set forth in state statutes. Ten, if determined applicable by the Exeter Department of Public Works, the applicant shall submit the land use and stormwater management information about the project using the PTAP online municipal tracking tool. The PTAP submittal must be accepted by DBW prior to the pre-construction meeting.
Okay, and I had one more. Which refers to the, the letter that I discussed from April 6, 2023 from Underwood Engineers, page two, the outstanding items. And we discussed these at the hearing. I am completely comfortable with the applicant's response, but would like that as a condition, that the response as outlined in the discussion is adhered to. Because he's, he talked about, under the utility plan, there were some minor things regarding the piping that they'll address as they can, and they also have to deal with DES. They're going to add stuff to the plan, on the utility plan, under drainage. They have to correct something on a plan, on number five. They need to rework the landscaping plan and number, these are my numbers, number six. They need to re-add the note regarding the isolator row.
But didn't Dave have a, a condition to be, to meet?
I did, but I see where he's going with that.
Okay.
Not only does it need to meet, it should be consistent with what was presented this evening.
Right.
Yeah.
That's what I'm trying to.
Fair enough.
That's okay, yeah.
They're all minor, really, but.
Just, I have just one comment on the conditions.
Yeah.
I think it's condition two about the monumentation shall be set in accordance. And I don't know if it matters with this, the, the monumentation was put in when the subdivision was done. So when our survey went out to do the existing conditions.
It's already there.
They recovered all of it.
But I didn't see, I didn't see markers on a couple of them, that's why I put it in. So just update the final plans to say it's, all this does is just make sure the final plans, because I don't remember, I don't think they were all on there.
Okay.
Like it all points tangent.
I'll confirm with them, but yeah.
On the, on the existing conditions plan.
Okay. Because. I can, yeah, and I'll.
If you guys already have them, then you've already adhered to it.
You have it on this, it's done, it was indicated on the TFF.
Yeah, there was one on the inside there that wasn't there. There was nothing on there.
All right, I'll, yeah, I'll check with them, I'll, I'll check with them on it.
It's very minor condition, it's putting on everything, just make sure they're all there.
Yeah.
It's just, if, if it's there, just put it on the plan that it's there, so.
Okay.
Iron pipe found or whatever.
Would you come up with any?
I'm, I'm, yeah. The April 13, 12, 13. It, it, is this good enough, the response to UEI? To, the response to UEI April 6 comment letter shall be consistent, the responses to the UEI April 6 comment letter shall be consistent with what the applicant presented at the April 13, 2023 Planning Board Meeting?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is that good enough?
Yeah.
Okay. There you go.
Yeah, just.
Number 11.
Document it.
Yep.
All right, that being the case.
Okay.
I can, I'm comfortable making a motion.
Okay, please do. Yes, please.
I move at the request of CA Design Inc., Wakefield Thermal, Planning Board Case Number 23-4 for Site Plan Approval. Be approved with the conditions as outlined by the Planner, Dave Sharfels.
The 11 conditions?
11 conditions.
Uh, did I hear a second?
Yeah.
Thank you. A hand vote on this?
Before we go, may I have that condition read again, please?
Which one, the 11?
The 11, so I fully understand what we've incorporated.
The, the responses to UEI, to the UEI April 6 comment letter shall be consistent with what the applicant presented at the April 13, 2023 Planning Board Meeting.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, roll call vote, let's start with Jen this time, please.
Aye.
Pete?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 Ma'am's vote? Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you for my thrown us.
Good luck with your project.
Yeah.
It's good, yeah. It's a great spot.
Okay, any master plan discussion?
Now, we have a master plan oversight committee meeting. It was supposed to be last Thursday, but Mr. Grutter's in Florida, so we're having it next Thursday.
Do you guys ever meet?
Next Thursday at 8:15 AM.
Uh, land use regulation review.
That's, that's pending. Uh, next meeting.
Oh, good. Field modifications?
None requested.
Okay.
Oh, wait a minute, none was approved. There was the Carlisle subdivision off Watson Room.
Yes.
The 12 lot subdivision, that has, they looked at that and they're actually, the potential buyer, I believe it's under contract, and the potential buyer kind of changed the, dropped the grade of the road a little bit to make everything kind of work better. And DPW is reviewing that and UEI is reviewing that right now. Uh, nothing's changing as far as the lots or anything like that.
Just get to work better.
But it was a steep, and, yeah. I mean, not that it's not going to still be steep, but it, it, they, they, whoever the, the prospective buyer looked at, I said, wait a minute, you could probably do a better job. And they kind of dropped it, so it, it's much, the driveways will tie in better and so forth. So that's, that's under review, but it hasn't been, you know.
Okay, good.
Hasn't been, no action's been taken.
Bond a letter of credit, reductions, releases?
Uh, releases, no, none requested.
Motion?
Vote to adjourn.
No, excellent, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Me too.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on channel 13 with all your school sports, events and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.